You can line up in the aisle where these two gentlemen are standing. Also, know where your cases are. So if you're one of the first cases, you can actually come down here. If anyone is here and they have the first case, I think I was talking to you. Are you the case on Clark Street? Clark Street? Over here? Okay, I'm gonna wait a little bit and put the, yeah, no, right here. Okay, you're gonna sit right here, okay?
Try to stay out of your space here.
Next to this handsome attorney, okay? And then you can sit right over there. You're, you're the ones on Clark, right? Okay. Okay, for anyone who's going to be testifying today, all I ask is that you be careful of the floor as you walk down to your seat. There are different levels, so try to look forward and down rather than at the commissioners. Looks like we're gonna be starting.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the May 16, 2025 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Brian Sanchez, and I am the chairman of the ZBA. With me today are Commissioners Swathy Staley and Adrian Soto to my right and Helen Schiller to my left. I'd like to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner Staley.
Here.
Commissioner Soto.
Here.
Mr. Schiller. I am present. Quorum is established. The minutes of April's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The meeting minutes are approved. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The agenda is approved. Now we will take any continuances or withdrawals.
Uh, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairperson, Richard Thoth, T O T H. I'm here on matters on page eight. Actually, all three matters on page eight, ninety-five, ninety-six, and ninety-seven. We're not asking actually for a traditional continuance. We're just asking that you hold this, these matters to the 2:00 PM session today. The reason being is that I was contacted. Staff called. The alderman had requested it in the afternoon, so she could appear, and she could not attend this morning. We are more than welcoming of that. We are available for the 2:00 PM session. Some potential objectors are aware of the change.
Okay.
We'd ask for a 2:00 PM session.
Okay, so calendar number is ninety-five twenty-five S, ninety-six twenty-five Z, and ninety-seven twenty-five Z will be continued to today's 2:00 PM call. No further notice will be given. Thank you. Any other continuances or withdrawals? Seeing none, Victor, call the first case.
Clark Street.
Yeah.
Good morning. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Sir, could you state your name for the record, please?
Sure.
And speaking to the microphone?
Sure. My name is Zhongxia Yuan, Z H O N G X I A. The last name is Y U A.
Okay.
I'm, this is Pam. She's the manager of this business. I'm, I just help her to translate.
Oh, to translate?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna swear you in as a translator. So if you could raise your right hand again. Oh, what's the, what's the language that you'll be translating?
So she speaks mostly Chinese, but she can speak from English.
Mandarin?
Mandarin, yeah.
Okay.
And I speak both.
Okay, so do you swear or affirm to accurately and truthfully translate Mandarin to English and English to Mandarin?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Yi Fei Pang.
Okay, and you're the applicant for this matter?
Yeah.
Okay, and you are opening up a scalp spa?
Yeah, hair and scalp, uh, care.
Okay, and we do have the hearing packet submitted for this matter. Do you swear or affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Uh, yes.
Okay, and we have a recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development that recommends approval of your proposed salon. Have you seen this recommendation letter before?
The recommendation just, it, it just建议那个approve你的case.
Yes.
Okay, and do you agree to be bound by the conditions that are set forth in this letter?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case, one forty-two twenty-five S.
Good morning. Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name's Allison Spencer. My own eighteen forty-five aesthetics at sixty-seven eighty North Northwest Highway.
Okay, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So you are looking to add permanent makeup services to your, your waxing salon that's already established?
Yes, we've been in business for two and a half years, and we do eyebrows and waxing already.
Okay.
So we're looking to add just permanent makeup for now, like just eyebrows for now.
Okay, we do have a recommendation letter from the Department of Plan and Development. Have you seen this letter?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in the letter?
Yes.
Thank you. We've got the hearing packet for this matter. Do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we, do we have someone here for calendar one forty-three twenty-five S? Blank. All right, do we pass it? Okay, all right, we're gonna pass that one. Next case.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Counselor, if you want to give us just a brief overview and then introduce your witnesses.
Yes, for the record, my name is Barry Ash. I'm an attorney representing the applicant Azura Beauty Studio LLC, which is seeking approval of a special use application in order to allow the establishment of a hair salon and barber shop that is located within one thousand feet of an existing personal service use located in the B one dash neighborhood business district in the Bridgeport community.
If you want to introduce your witnesses?
Okay, I, in the application, there was an exhibit D to the application that was provided by my expert witness, Kareem Musawar, who I know the board is very familiar with, and his resume is on file. I also have the manager of Azura Beauty Studio LLC, Jessica Jennings, to my right.
Great, thank you very much. For the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We do have a recommendation from the department that recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. With that, we'll take this under advisement. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Next case, one five S, forty-nine thirteen North Damon.
Hey, good morning, sir. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, if you want to give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Absolutely. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and esteemed commissioners. For the record, my name is Sarah Barnes, and I'm a partner with the law firm of Gozdeki Del Gidache, Americas, and Bracato. Here today with me is the property owner and applicant Gerard Heffernan. We're here today seeking both a special use and a variation to allow for some improvements at the property generally located at forty-nine thirteen North Damon Avenue. Those improvements call for the construction of a new four-story, four-unit, all-residential building that will have off-street parking for four vehicles. The intention is for it to be a multifamily condominium building. The neighborhood is lacking in that type of housing product, and it allows some good entry for starter families. So we have reached out to, both of us personally reached out to Alderman Martin prior to submitting the application, and we've also reached out to the local community organizations and neighbors, and we're not aware of any concerns. And with that, the special use is for ground-floor residential. Every other property on the block is all residential in nature, so it's very much compatible. And then the variation is to allow for an increase in the maximum number of parking for our transit location, and that is, again, because these are condominium units. So, um, with that, yeah.
One question, my, the hardship, is it that the, the units just wouldn't be as marketable without a parking spot?
Yeah, so we actually did a survey of the current listings on the MLS in this neighborhood, and there's not, there hasn't been a single sale for a condominium without at least one onsite, onsite parking space. And since these are larger units, they are intended for families, so we do believe that at least they'll have one car.
Okay, sir, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
And have you had a chance to review the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation letter?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter? Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
No.
We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, good morning. Could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Yes, thank you once more, Mr. Chairman and esteemed commissioners. For the record, my name is Sarah Barnes, and I'm a partner with the law firm of Gozdeki Del Gidache, Americas, and Bracato. Here with me today is one of the property owners, Eileen Noel. She owns the subject property with her husband, Martin. Um, similar to the last case that we just saw, this is an all-residential block located in the thirty-fifth ward. Um, almost every single property on this block is a single-family residence. There is, I believe, two, two-unit residences. This is the only vacant lot on that subject block. So we are here today seeking similarly a special use to allow for ground-floor residential. And as well, we're seeking kind of a unique variation. This because we are within two thousand six hundred and forty feet of a, of a train station. This is considered a pedestrian street, and so we have to abide by the pedestrian street design guidelines, which call for the buildings abutting in the street. Because of the residential nature of this block, all of the buildings are set back and have front yards, so we wanted to maintain that. So we do have a larger-than-five-foot setback. Um, the hardship there would be remaining consistent with the residential nature of the block, which is more compatible with the character of the neighborhood as opposed to the kind of arbitrary guidelines of the pedestrian street, which is intended for commercial use.
Right, and I saw that the, the, like, the average setback was about eleven feet for the front, and what is your proposed setback?
At, yeah, between the two. Sorry. Hands right here. Yeah, I can't even, too old. I think we're over ten feet. My gosh, I can't even, eleven point three.
Okay.
Or sorry, almost eleven and a half.
Okay.
Eleven feet, four inches. So we are, and we're also maintaining the rear setback on a very meaningful rear yard. And again, that's very compatible based on the photographs that we submitted with all the other homes in the neighborhood. Um, and the relief is being sought in this instance to allow for the construction of a single-family residence, because again, felt that was more compatible and consistent with the neighborhood. Um, so we have reached out again, collectively to, at the time, Alderman Ramirez Rosa, and then after his appointment, we did reach out to his successor, Alderman Kazid. I always say it wrong, Kazada. Um, and as well, the local community organizations and neighbors, and once again, not aware of any concerns.
Okay, it, correct me if I'm wrong, did you introduce your witness?
I did, Eileen Noel.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Correct.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, we're, we're calling it one. Good morning, everyone. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Counselor Fatikas, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you, sir. For, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Henry Sober Living House Incorporated. Uh, the applicant is a non-for-profit corporation that has been working with individuals who struggle with substance abuse, and in many cases, men who are released from prior incarceration. Uh, Henry Sober Living opened its first residence in two thousand and one. Uh, since then, it's grown to have three residence locations in the city of Chicago, and it's provided temporary housing and support for over fifteen thousand individuals. Uh, the applicant is now in the process of establishing a fourth location at the subject property located again at seventy-seven thirty-five South Vernon. The subject property is improved with a three-story building that was most recently used as a convent for nuns of the Saint Dorothy Parish. Uh, the building in particular offered a unique opportunity to adapt and reuse the existing group home layout and to provide immediate housing for men in need. In order to legally establish the transitional residence use, the applicant is seeking a special use because the property is located in an RS two zoning district. Uh, Chairman, we did also file a companion variation to reduce the off-street parking requirement per the TSL ordinance. Uh, however, in working with staff, we've actually been able to adjust our plan to provide three required onsite spaces. Um, again, tho- those three onsite spaces. So unless staff has an issue, I believe the staff recommendation references the updated plan. Unless, unless staff has an issue, I think we can withdraw voluntarily the variation request specific to parking. It, it doesn't apply.
We're good? Okay, all right, so, um, so calendar number one sixty-eight twenty-five Z, you're withdrawing that?
Voluntarily withdrawing. It's, it's, it's moot.
Great.
And Chairman, I'm sorry, before we move to our witnesses, I believe you may have received emails from residents stating that the shelter or the residence was already active. Uh, based on the prior convent or group housing use, the applicant's initial outreach to the prior alderman, uh, he believed the use was legal. The renovation work was very limited to frankly repainting and a deep clean, um, so the building, building permit process or review process was not. building, building permit process or review process was not required. As soon as the building was ready, the Department of Corrections began referring residents to the facility, which Henry did accept. When he applied for his business license, he learned that even though the property had previously operated with group housing, a new special use would be required for the change in use. At that point, Henry retained my office. We began working with the architect on plan review, the parking determination letter with DPD, as well as the formal special use and variation application processes. So yes, the facility began operating before the special use hearing today, and we're here to take responsibility for that. With that said, though, we want to make sure the board understands that the decision to continue to operate was made to make sure that men who are struggling with substance abuse or addiction, and who are frankly coming back to a neighborhood of incarceration, have a place to go, have support, have housing, and have security that they absolutely need. And the silver lining in all of this is we've worked with the alderman's office. There have been no police complaints, no zoning inspections or issues. The only permit issue related to a deck at the rear of the property that was frankly a quick fix, it was replace and repair permit, so nothing substantive. We actually take that as a bit of pride, because when we had the community meeting earlier this week, a few of the folks mentioned that they didn't realize Henry was there, and that's the point. We're not supposed to stand out. So I wanted to put that out on the record, let you know that there was a background to this, that we have worked with the alderman's office, have participated in the community process, and we're here asking for support to legalize the transitional residence.
Okay, great. And do you want to introduce your witnesses?
Before I forget, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Henry McGee, and our MAI-designated appraiser, Bud Kerwin.
Great. For Mr. McGee and Mr. Kerwin, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, sir.
I do.
Thank you very much. Mr. McGee, have you had an opportunity to read the recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development?
No, I haven't, my lawyer.
Oh, yeah. So we're 100% agreement on the conditions because of, I'm sorry, the only change was substituting the site plan that calls out the three onsite parking spaces.
Yes, sir.
And that we did review.
Yes, sir.
Actually, it came up, it was finalized earlier this week, so we had an opportunity to make sure it was compliant before bringing it to the board.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
And so you, you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth by the Department of Planning and Development?
Yes, I do, sir.
Thank you very much. And I can tell we've got some supporters here as well. Alderman Hall, would you like to speak on this matter?
Yes, just briefly, first of all, thank you. Secondly, this has been a huge blessing to our ward. As previously stated, this was before my time, and so the interpretation of our operation was rendered by the previous alderman. And upon getting sworn in two years ago, immediately, this was brought to my attention simply out of goodwill and good faith to make sure that there was never an issue, both with the operation of it, the structure of the building, in which I did a personal walkthrough to see the renovations and the resurrection of what was an abandoned convent. And to that end, we did go through the process, not skipping any, any lines in that process to maintain the integrity of our ward. And what we put in place in the room was jam-packed, close to 100 people, in which nobody had anything bad to say. The observations from the community were automatically addressed the minute I got word of it, which was people were just having conversations on the deck at 10 o'clock at night, in which they agreed, the staff, which was fully present along with all the board members, to make that small adjustment. I conclude by saying that in the, in the presence of a new pope that has a heart for those who are in need, this is what St. Dorothy is now becoming. And they have now added a soon-to-be full service for their guests, food and clothing and all types of just goodwill items in the other part of this campus. And so it's been a blessing to us, and I just want to keep the blessings going. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, did you want to speak in support of this matter? Okay. Did you want to speak in support of this matter? Oh, oh, okay, all right. Okay, are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, as the, as this case gets settled in, I just wanted to state for the record that due to a personal connection with this project, I will be recusing myself from deliberating on this matter.
Okay. So Commissioner Staley is recused for calendar numbers 14925S and 15025Z. Hey, good morning. Would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Matt Norton. I'm a partner with the law firm of Burke Warren McKay in Saratoga. And with me today is Reverend Marshall Hatch Jr., co-founder and executive director of the Maafa Redemption Project, and Lindsay Sorrell, with the third entity. Lindsay's the project architect. We also have a report on file from Peter Pulos with BBG Real Estate. Peter is our appraiser. We are here today on two forms of relief. The first, a special use. The applicant is seeking to redevelop and repurpose a church building at 4241 West Washington as a community center. That building has been existing for over 100 years, and we seek to keep the church building, renovate it, keep it standing, but repurpose it for the benefit of the community. The Maafa Center for Arts and Activism will be the primary user of that community center, and that will serve the Garfield Park neighborhood. This center is, we, we call it the MAC, the Maafa Center for Arts and Activism. It will provide a physical space and community gathering place for the Maafa Redemption Project to further its mission of offering direct service and community development. It will offer workforce training, character and spiritual development, and a host of wraparound social services. In addition, the community, the community will be invited to participate in inter-generation arts and activism classes, and those will include media content creation, poetry, spoken word, music and dance classes for community members of all ages, children, adults and seniors. This project is part of a larger project, the Sankofa Wellness Village Project, which will be interconnected capital and social investments along the Madison-Palaski Commercial Corridor. The Sankofa Wellness Village will create opportunities for West Garfield Park residents of all ages to have access to health, wellness and recreation services, along with finance, entrepreneur support, business development, healthy food and the arts. That project is a recipient of a, the Chicago Prize through the Pritzker Traubert Foundation, and is a, our, our project, the MAC, is a key component of that overall redevelopment project. So that's the special use component. The variation is a little ironic. We are tearing down a, we have an existing 50-foot rear yard encroachment. We're tearing that down, and, but the, the rear of the community center will still require a relatively small variation of, about, little under six and a half feet. So that is our request for special use and variation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pulos, since you came a little bit late, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. For all of the applicant's witnesses, do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. For Mr. Hatch, have you had a chance to review the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation letter?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in the letter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Morning. Would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much, Counselor. Please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Agnes Plek. I'm an attorney with law firm of Jaffe in Berlin, and I represent Natural Clavers Spa LLC. And I have here with me today two managers of that LLC. I have John Dyer and Pat Worm Campowim. And very simply, we have an A-story mixed, mixed-use building. There is a commercial unit on the ground floor. It's been vacant for some time. They're proposing to remove that vacancy and open a spa with massage establishment these days, and I can, I have personal experience with this. The people are all about holistic approach to health and stress relief, even pain management. So massage services are very much in demand, so we're, we're hoping that this is going to be a huge improvement for the community. This is a fairly small establishment, about 900 square feet, only three treatment rooms. They've talked to their neighbors, they've talked to the residents of that building above them, they've talked to the Old Town Merchant Association, they've talked to the alderman's office, and everybody's in support of this proposed use at this location. So we're hoping for your support as well and approval.
Thank you. For both of the applicant's witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. Sir, have you had a chance to read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation letter? And do you agree to be bound by the conditions?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. From looking at your hearing packet, there was reference to a citation in March?
Yes, sir.
What happened there?
Should I respond, or do you want John to respond?
Go ahead, John.
Oh, we, we screwed up. I mean, basically, we, we had a trial run. We had, we had guests and neighbors come over for a week, and we had food, and, and we think a former employer called, called, and basically, the question was, did we accept money? No, not for the massage, but people for the food, you know? And so it was, it was about eight people that came over, so that was it. And so we worked that, all the citation, worked it all out.
Okay, okay.
They did, Mr. Chairman, if I can add, they did have administrative hearings at the Superior, so they were cited, they paid their fine, and they were ordered to come into compliance. So the moment they got citation, they understood that they have to follow up with the business license, of course.
Sure. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, one.
Good morning. Just, I just want to make a clarification on the record, because I'm looking at my agenda, and it's got it listed as 15225S, but that should be a Z. So just, we'll correct this error on the record that the agenda should reflect 15225Z, not S.
Mr. Chairman, you have eagle eyes. Can you believe that I didn't notice it?
Okay, would everyone plan to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Again, for the record, my name is Agnes Plek. I'm an attorney with law firm of Jaffe in Berlin, and I represent Tom and Mariana Malidi, the owners of the subject property and the applicants in this variation. Very simply, we have this two-story beautiful charming cottage that they took pains over the past five years to preserve, repair and restore. And the original construction, it's an old building, it's a 130-yard building. The original construction actually had this large deck and porch and wall, masonry wall at the rear of their property. That has been removed since then. They've reclaimed a lot of their green space. They have small children who love to run around and, and play in the backyard. So at this point, rather than replacing that old porch in the same location, that porch was about 14 feet from the rear property line. So now they're proposing to do something much smaller. Now, we have several unique circumstances in this case. We have a substandard lot, 15 feet shorter than a regular lot. We have a, one of the smallest buildings on this block, this is our single-family home. Another unique, unique thing here is that there is no public alley at the rear. So the only way for them to enter their garage, which is attached to the rear of their house, is through this large south, south side setback, 14 feet, about 14 feet. However, it's not really usable for open space because it has that drive-through for their, for their garage. So again, they're hoping to keep that reclaimed open space. They're gonna have a deck over the garage, they're gonna have a small landing at the rear. Another unique, unique feature here is that the main floor of the house is actually located about seven feet above the grade. So no matter what kind of deck or porch at the rear we would have, it would still need that variation, because unfortunately, the code does not allow by right decks and porches above, more than four feet above the grade. So there's really no alternative design that we can come up with to, to do this without this variation. We are very much aligning with everything else, everything else that is around in the neighborhood. Both adjacent neighbors have spiral stairs, not to mention, both adjacent neighbors are actually towering over this charming cottage. So we are hoping for your support and approval of this fairly small variation.
Okay. For the applicant's witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, good morning. Would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
You have to, you have to say yes? Okay, thank you. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you very much. Good morning, members of the board and Mr. Chairman. My name is Jimena Castro. I am a partner at Acosta Esq. With me today are both property owners and applicants, Francisca Cervantes to my right, her husband and co-property owner and co-applicant Moises Cervantes, and then to their right is the architect. So I'm going to ask them if they can state their name and then business address for the record, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Cervantes, can you please state your name and your address for the record?
Yes, my name is Francisca Cervantes, 759 Place.
Thank you.
My name is Moises Cervantes, 715 Place.
My name is Tulok O'Ne, from Bina Project. My address, 4468 Nodals 9.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, for all the applicant's witnesses, do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge? All right, for all the applicant's witnesses, do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Counselor, could you just explain to us the hardship in this matter?
Yes. So the hardship is that the existing parcels are part of one zoning lot. And the applicants would like their children to develop the property, the, the half of the parcel where you see the grass and the garage. So their children are actually going to be building a two-flat right next to their parents. And we have an irregular-sized lot. And not only is it in a regular size, it is also reduced in size. It's actually the smallest of that block. And also, we have, it's a TOD lot as well. So any new constructions in a B zoning district would need 50% of parking. And we're providing two parking spots for the new construction. So we have an increase. So we can have one-to-one parking for the new construction, which the community was in support of back when we did the rezoning for this project. And then the existing conditions as well for 715, which is the exist, the improved lot. That one does not have parking. And then the rear, if you look at, if you look at the drawing up there, you have the rear deck of the existing residential building that prevents any inclusion of parking. So we're sort of in a very unique situation. And then the hardship for the setback, for the new improved, to be improved lot. We need to provide parking for the community and also, you know, the desire as well to have that one-to-one. So we need to reduce the regard setback. Those are the hardships of the case.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you very much. For the record again, my name is Jimena Castro. I am a partner at Acosta Esq. Here today with the representatives of the applicant entity, the architect, and a special use appraiser. To my right is Mario Valenti, who is the lead architect on the project. And to his right is Cesar Almaraz, who is the director of operations. To his right is Jason Blumenfeld, who is the construction manager. And to his right is the expert, Peter Pulo. So I'm going to ask if every single one of you can state your name and your business address for the record. Mario, please.
Yep.
Thank you.
Good morning. Mario Valentini, MRV Architects, 5105 Tollview Drive in Rolling Meadows.
Good morning. Cesar Almaraz, director of operations, 6500 Northwest, I'm sorry, Nor, 6500 Northwest Avenue.
Jason Blumenfeld, construction manager, Ampler. Business address?
Business address.
2400 North Broadway, Pittsburgh, Kansas, 66762.
Pulos, 230 West Monroe, Suite 2125, Chicago 11.
And do, which, which one of you is the representative for the applicant?
The two gentlemen in the middle.
Okay, great.
Yes, the director of operations and the construction manager.
Okay. Have you gentlemen had the opportunity to read the recommendation from the Department of Plan Development?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in the letter?
Yes.
Thank you. Do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. From what I could tell with this project, the, the drive-through where the, where the, where the, where the orders will be made and, and received is far from residential, from the residential nearby. Is that correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. I knew you were gonna ask that. I thought I'd get ahead.
It's about 80 feet. 80 feet from the property to the north.
Okay.
Approximately, give or take.
Are there any other questions from the board, Commissioner Schiller? All right, we'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we waiting for someone else?
Great. Sorry, Your Honor.
No, it's okay.
I could actually get started if you like.
Yeah, here it is, Tim.
Yeah, we'll wait.
Yeah, we're here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the board. My name is Al Demanskas. I'm the attorney for Everclean, the applicant. This is a request for a special use to continue the use of an existing car wash on Archer that's been there since 2003. The change is, and why they asked us to do a special use is because we made improvements, curb cut and some other additional improvements. And also, it's a new owner. So there's no change in the use. We have a letter from the alderman, Lee, in support. And the conditions that were submitted from the planning department are acceptable.
Okay.
And I have, as the witnesses, I have Joe Ryan, who is the appraiser. And I have Tim, Tim Lung. And where's Tim? Tim was just here with, with the applicant. Oh, he's right there. Okay. So if it could be sworn in and they can confirm what's stated in the report.
Great, thank you. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you very much. And just to confirm, sir, for you, have you had a chance to review the Department of Plan Development's recommendation letter?
I have.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter? Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Hey, thanks for your consideration.
Look very distinguished.
Good morning. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Sue Gonzalez for Divine Beauty LLC.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. So you are opening up a nail salon, correct?
Correct.
And we do have a recommendation from the Department of Plan Development that recommends approval. Do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you. Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you very much. For the record, once more, my name is Jimena Castro. I am a partner at Acosta Esq. With me today is the applicant for this matter, Nathan Laporte. And to his right is the architect for this matter as well, Mario Rosado. Nathan, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Nathan Laporte. I currently live at 1512 West Wilson Avenue, Apartment 1.
And then Mario, can you please state your name and business address for the record?
Mario Rosado, 3013 West Lyndale.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is a, a third-floor dormer?
Yes.
Okay. Hardship is?
Existing conditions for the west setback and then existing conditions for the combined setback. And also, existing conditions for the height.
Right. Okay, for the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
Is it, it looks like this is a family home?
Yes.
And is it gonna stay in the family? Are you, is, are you doing this for resale or for?
No, for, for myself. Thank you.
Our condolences, whichever is more appropriate.
Any other questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The attorney?
Yeah.
You know where the attorney is? No?
He was, yeah, I saw him.
Okay. Yeah, let's, 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 yeah. Okay, okay, he's running late, so we'll pass it.
Going on a order, next case.
All right, good morning. Would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you, Chairman, Members of the Committee. My name is John Fritchy. On behalf of the applicant, Karina Kinnick. To my immediate right is Robert Handaboot, on behalf of the applicant. Anna Shreve, on behalf of Liberator Illinois. Yanni Davis, our architect, and a representative from the alderman's office. We are here today on a special use application to allow the establishment of a, of a social equity cannabis dispensary to be located in the Edgewater community. This has come after very cooperative work with both the alderman's office as well as the local community groups. We have had literally not one objection to this anywhere along the process. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. For all of the applicant's witnesses, do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. For the, did you introduce your witnesses?
I did.
You did. Okay. I'm sorry.
You, you had me questioning. I'm like, I thought I did.
Which one of you is the applicant representative?
I am.
Sir?
Yes.
Have you had a chance to read the Department of Plan Development's recommendation?
Yes, I have.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter?
Yes.
Thank you. And let's see, we've got somebody from the alderman's office? Great, could you state your name and role, please?
Yes, my name is Agnes Chan. I'm the director of planning and infrastructure for alderwoman Manah Happenworth.
And tell us why you're here today?
Just here to reiterate that there is overwhelming support from our stakeholders. And including constituents who live near the business. The applicant went through our engagement process and, including a meeting with stakeholders and with our zoning advisory council. We also rezoned this parcel last year in anticipation of this business.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
All right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Tyler Manik with Ashane Banks Kenny Law Firm. I'm here representing Matir Patel, the owner, and Jaime Gascón, the project architect. We're here to repurpose an existing office space at 944 North Damon into a business live-work unit. The block, as stated in the findings of fact, the block has a lot of live-work and residential ground floor uses. This is a long-time office vacancy and we're just trying to activate it. We did speak with alder, the alderman's office, and he's okay with this project. And with that, I'd like to affirm, have Matir affirm his testimony and Jaime affirm the testimony in the project.
So do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
I do.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. Sir, have you had a chance to read the Department of Plan Development's recommendation letter?
He hasn't, but the conditions are?
Why don't you go ahead and just read it and?
I know Matir fairly well that he's okay with them.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter?
I do.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Do you read the department's recommendation anymore or no?
We don't, we don't typically read them, yeah.
This has been incredibly efficient.
The new day. Good morning. Uh, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you. Uh, good morning, my name is Zubin Kamula. I'm a partner with Siegel and Moses in Chicago. I'm representing the applicant, Sauce Brothers, in connection with his application to establish a special use for a rooftop patio at an existing restaurant at 1359 West Taylor. Uh, the restaurant does business as Peanut Park Trattoria. With me are Dave Benomi, uh, member and manager of the applicant entity, and our land use expert, Jason Jarrett of Oak Ridge and Casil.
Okay, um, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. Um, Mr. Benomi, have you had a chance to read the Department of Plan Development's recommendation letter?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth therein?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any questions from the board?
No, just a comment that this is close to my house and I'm very excited.
She said it's closer to her house and she's excited, but that won't prevent you from being impartial in your vote. All right, with that, we will take this under advisement. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
All right, uh, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney. I represent the applicant, James Turner, who's present here, seated beside me, and next to him, project architect Brian Hudson. 3359 South, Indiana, uh, and two variations related. Basically, we've got an existing two-story, two-flat building, wants to convert the basement to an apartment for a total of three units. It's in an R4 district, a three-flat is permitted, but would require 3,000 square feet of lot area for the third unit. He's only got 2,0952, about 98%, so we're looking for a variation for the extra 2%. A second variation is, once we add that apartment, it actually increases the required rear yard open space. We're keeping what's there, but there's no room to add any, so that's the second variation. Uh, so with that, I've got, I've got James and the project architect and...
Great. Uh, do both of you, uh, affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
I, I just wanted to confirm that the required light, et cetera, is available in the basement apartment? Thank you.
Yeah, and of course, we're only seeking zoning permission, architects involved, because they still have to complete a building permit that would point that to be examined.
So since the building permit comes next, I just wanted to ask that question.
Good question, absolutely. I asked it myself.
Okay, uh, with that, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney, represent the applicant. The applicant is Catherine DeLacy, who's present seated beside me. And also note for the record, Catherine i- is an architect and she's the architect on this project. Matter of fact, works for the architectural firm Myers, uh, Jeffers Gillespie Architects that has their office in the first floor of the beautiful building on the subject property, front of which is being preserved in that neighborhood. And this is a rear addition that we're here. And the existing building is on a block, which is improved with a number of three and four-story mixed-use buildings, commercial on the ground floor in the front of the building. And this particular block, a mix of old and new buildings, uh, several of the buildings have either a second building on the lot or a coach house or an attached garage, but several of those buildings do not provide that full 30-foot rear setback. So what we're proposing here is very compatible and it'll certainly not alter the essential character of the block.
Um, okay, um, for the applicant, uh, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, I had a question, um, about one of the, and I don't know if this was a typo or not, but in the hearing packet, the box for the property contains a development that was unpermitted and/or built in violation of the zoning code. What, what was built in violation of the zoning code?
That, that, that was a typo.
Typo.
I think I just checked the wrong box.
Okay, I, I, yeah, I thought that might be the case.
I apologize.
I don't understand this.
And so, um, could you explain what the hardship is for this matter?
Well, the, the hardship is, uh, it's a business zoning district, it's a business block. Uh, the historic development of the block is a bunch of buildings without, um, without the normal backyard garage setup that you'd see on a regular block, especially in a residential district. This is an older neighborhood with some older buildings and corner building has two buildings on the block with neither one of them has a 30-foot rear setback. Second building off the corner, next door to the subject property, has a coach house, which does not have a 30-foot rear setback. Yeah, the idea is, this is a condo building, it's got two condo units on the upper floors, so obviously, since it's at a premium, uh, she has a need and she'd be happy to testify for some extra square footage and some extra room. So that's the purpose of this rear s- rear addition. We're talking about a two-story rear addition on a block of three and four-story buildings. So in that particular neighborhood, people have either larger buildings or additions and all, all she's trying to do is add a few square feet herself and could not do it conveniently on that lot because the hardship is the existing building and the position of the existing building and she couldn't build the addition she wanted and still observe a full 30-foot rear setback. And it's only part of the building that really extends in, into that rear setback because it's kind of angled, if you recall that design.
Yeah, I, I just, for clarity, so on the first floor is the office and on the second and third floor is one unit or two?
Um, me and my son.
Yeah, I think, speaking of the micro.
Me and my son live on the second floor and then I have a condo above it that I rent out to like, um, make ends meet, just to start.
I got you.
Yeah.
So, and what the, what your goal is, is to expand both the second and third floor units?
No, I'm just, um, basically adding, um, space to the second floor only. And the way I designed it, it was all about getting, keeping like light and vent for the office. Because like right now, we have like beautiful windows and doors and, um, I didn't want to mess that up by kind of like tacking something right on the back of the building. So by putting it low and kind of out back, then the office still has like really nice light and vent.
The office is also being extended, or, no, this is just going over that space?
Yeah, so the office, everything in the existing building just stays as it is, which was also what I wanted to do, like not gut out the whole unit. So, so then just the addition is just for living space for, for my unit.
On the second floor?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? All right, we'll take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case?
Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney, represent the applicant. On behalf of the applicant, I have Kyle Nicolich sitting next to me, next to him, project architect Ramon Contreras, and next to him, Joe Ryan from the LaSalle Appraisal Group, who's our expert witness. And I might mention that Joe had done a written report in connection with that and we had submitted that report with our application package. And other than that, uh, we've got, uh, an old, small building on a single lot, a small storefront that, uh, difficult to rent under the current conditions. Building located on a block that's already had residential in- incursion on the first floor. So there's a number of buildings right now that have residential use on the ground floor and that's what we're attempting to do because with the small commercial space that is existing, it would just be very hard to rent in today's commercial climate. So, well, with, with that, um, we had submitted our package, uh, Ramon Contreras, our architect, here for questions. And then Joe Ryan's report is in the packet.
Thank you. Uh, for all of the applicant's witnesses, do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. They'll be admitted into the record. Uh, for the applicant, have you had a chance to review the updated letter from the Department of Plan and Development?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth therein?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Yes, and Mr. Chairman, if I could, just for the record, just to clarify that, the original record talked about the brick garbage container. We had actually revised, the architect had revised the plan, so I think you have the revised plan, which incorporated that original condition that they asked to impose.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does he have everybody?
Are we waiting for him or his witnesses?
Does he, does he, does he ha- does he have, uh, all the people?
Are we waiting for him or are we waiting?
Mr. Chairman, uh, one, one, uh, quick apology because all of our witnesses are not here yet. We were incredibly impressed with the speed with which the hearing moved today. Well, we, 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 we come fairly frequently.
Mr. Borstein has seen how we work lately.
Yeah.
He, he should know better.
No, I honestly, well, I also, you know, of course, there's, there were withdrawals and no objectors. I mean, this has really been incredible. But anyway, so we have some of our witnesses, we, we don't have all of them. Um, I could do one house cleaning matter before we start because there's actually...
When are your witnesses supposed to be here?
They're coming.
Eight minutes from now. All right, let's, let's take a recess. Uh, we're, we're, I, I move that we recess until, uh, 10:30. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, we're in recess until, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you.
It would make it difficult.
Yeah.
Not on...
All right, I move that we reconvene this meeting to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes. We're back. We are on our last cases of the morning session. Would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for indulging us and giving us the time here. So this is LEARN Charter's Hunter Perkins campus. I, I think we presented to you, I think you were the chairman, but maybe not. This whole case was already approved in 2022. Were you, were you here then?
I was here. I, I wasn't the chairman yet. That was when now Alderman Knutson was the chair.
Right, okay. So you might remember the case. Nothing has changed. It's all the same as we had already been approved once. So we, the problem was that we ran into COVID, and the project got delayed, and so all of our approvals lapsed. So we are before you again with the same applications. The one technical change I want to mention is that there's one application that's really unnecessary, and it is application 17625Z. It asks for a front yard variation for our off-site parking lot. But it's really, this is already covered in 17525Z. 17525Z. In that one, we're going down to a zero setback in our parking lot. So we can just withdraw and dispense with 176.
Okay. So calendar number 17625Z is hereby withdrawn.
Thank you. Other than that, I can introduce my witnesses. Everything is in the packet. It's all the same terrific project. We're thrilled to be back and hopefully starting. But I've got Greg White from LEARN.
Counselor, sorry, just to interrupt. Would you be able to just restate your name for the record for the court reporter?
Oh, sure. I might not have even done that. Scott Borstein from Nealon Leroy. Thanks. Rachel Cooper from our architect. Kathy Dart, our appraiser. And Michael Worthman from KLAO. Same team, same information. Really, nothing has changed since the last application. You know, it's got the recommendations from the planning staff. We have a letter from the alderman in support. So we're here to answer any questions.
For all of the witnesses, do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. For the applicant, have you had a chance to read the two Department of Plan and Development letters with regard to 173 and 17425S?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in those letters?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board?
So could you just really quickly summarize the, what, what doing this addition means for the programming at the school?
Absolutely. Right now, our students use the, a small room for both gym and cafeteria. We need, I need a gym. We do not have a gym. It's a large school. So a new gym allows us to, so kids can stop eating in their classroom. They can now have separate cafeteria and gym. We're also adding nine classrooms. But it's really like for science, for music, for art, to give the total experience for our students.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to note, it's serving the same school population. They just don't have these facilities. So it's, there's no major increase in enrollment or anything. There's a few extra staff people, but it's to serve the kids that are there. It's just an overcrowded facility.
Yeah. Great. Okay, with that, we will take this matter under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You too. All right. I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section 244 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes. We're in closed session. All right, I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the time stated by me. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes. The continuance is approved. I move to approve all withdrawal requests. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes. The withdrawals are approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 14125S. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 14225S. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 14325S. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 14425S. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 14525S and 14625Z. Commissioner Schiller, seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Sch... I move to approve application for calendar numbers 14725S and 14825Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 14925S and 15025Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
I abstain.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 15125S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 15225Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 15325Z, 15425Z, and 15525Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 15625S, 15725Z, 15825Z, and 15925Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter number 16025S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. I vote yes, the matters are, or the matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 16125Z and 16225Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter numbers 16325Z and 16425Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. I vote yes, the matters are approved. I move to approve application for counter number 16525Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number 16625S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number 16725S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for calendar numbers 16925Z, 17025Z, 17125Z, 17225Z, 17325S, 17425S, and 17525Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters are approved. Move to approve application for calendar number 17725S. Commissioner Schiller second, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. Move to approve application for counter number 6525S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matters approved. I move to approve application for counter number 8225S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller.
Yes.
I vote yes, the matter is approved. I move that we, wait. Okay, I move that we recess until 2:00 PM. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley.
Yes.
Commissioner Soto.
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller. I vote yes, we're in recess until 2:00 PM.